Heavenly Father, we come before you today with thanksgiving and praise. You are the King of kings, the Lord of lords, the Almighty God who reigns over all creation. You are the Alpha, the Omega, the beginning and the end, and there is none like you in all the earth. Lord, we stand in awe of your majesty and power. We stand in reverence, praise and worship. Father, we praise you for your kindness and faithfulness that never fails, and your grace that is new every morning. May your mercy endure, your mercy endures forever, and your grace towards us is beyond measure. Lord, we praise you for your holiness, your righteousness and your justice. Father, we invoke your holy presence amongst us as regarders educators under the umbrella of the Presbyterian Secondary School Board of Education of the PCTT. Lord, we humbly submit our will to you in body, mind and spirit. You are the potter and we are the clay. We pray that you will bless our presenters today and all the proceedings here. May you inspire and open our hearts and minds to receive a blessing that we will be further rejuvenated and equipped to go back to our charges, to give that unconditional love and support to your children. Bless your people who are gathered here today and take charge of all that will be done. We give you all the honour, glory and praise. In Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior, we pray. Amen.
Gracious and loving Jesus, we praise and glorify your name today, O Lord, that you have blessed us with the opportunity to come together for this Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education Convention. We pray, O Lord, that as we dialogue and as we then discuss and as we look, O Lord, to the team thriving and a dynamic environment, that your hand, O Lord, will be upon us, that you may bless us. Gracious Jesus, we pray today, O Lord, that you will take charge of all that would be said and done, for we place this exercise and this convention, O loving Jesus, in your hand. For this we pray in Christ's name, amen. I want to read to us at this time just a portion of scripture taken from the book of Acts, Acts chapters nine, and I want to read to you from verses thirteen through to verse twenty, sorry, to verse nineteen. I read to you from the Good News version, and it says to us, "Ananias answered, 'Lord, many people have told me about this man, about all the terrible things he has done to your people in Jerusalem. He has come to Damascus with authority from the chief priests to arrest all who worship you.' The Lord said to him, 'Go, because I have chosen him to serve me, to be an instrument for me, and to make my name known to the Gentiles and to the kings and to the people of Israel, and I myself will show him all that he must suffer for my sake.' So Ananias went, entered the house where Saul was, and placed his hands on him. 'Brother Saul,' he said, 'the Lord sent me, Jesus himself, who appeared to you on the road as you were coming here. He sent me so that you might see again and be filled with the Holy Spirit. At once something like fish scales fell from Saul's eyes, and he was able to see again. He stood up and was baptised, and after he had eaten, his strength came back.' The word of the Lord read to us, 'Thanks be to God for his word.'" As we prepare our hearts and minds to listen to the word of God, right by our seated, very reverently and prayerfully, we'll sing the little hymn twice. He is Lord, he is Lord. And because he is Lord, my dear friends, we want to come together in prayer once more. As we close our eyes and bow our heads, gracious Jesus, as we seek, O Lord, to go into your word at this time, we pray your Holy Spirit's blessings upon us. And to this end, may the words of my mouth and the meditation of all our hearts be acceptable unto you, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. Amen. The story is told of the young boy who went for a walk with his father. As they went into the forest hilly mountain area, the boy slipped and he fell, and he said, "Ah!" And he heard in a distance the voice calling back, "Ah!" And he said, "Father, what is that?" But before the father got the opportunity to answer the young boy, the boy shouted out, "You coward!" The voice called back, "You coward!" The voice, the boy said, "You are, you are awful." The voice said, "You are awful." The father said, "Listen, son." And the father said, "You are wonderful." And the voice echoed back, "You are wonderful." The father said, "You are amazing." The voice called back, "You are amazing." "You are courageous." The voice called back, "You are courageous." The father said to him, "Son, some people call this echo, but it is life. What you give is what you get back." The scripture you read today just tells a little part of the story of that experience that Saul would have had with Jesus. Who was Saul? A very educated man. He was taught at the feet of some of the best educators of his day and his time. What did he do with that education that he received? What did he do with the lessons of life and all that was taught to him? He sought, no doubt, in his attempt to persecute those who worship Jesus, the Christians. He sought and he seeked to get letters to go to Damascus, to bring them back so that they could be punished. And so we are told that while he was on his way to Damascus, he would have had an experience, my dear friends, an experience that would have changed this man's life forever. He was struck down by the horse he was riding, and he was led, not able to see, not able to speak. He was led to a place that he would find refuge and be comfortable. But while all of this is happening, God is still working, and he's working through the heart and the spirit and the life of Ananias. And in the midst of all of this, God is still working through the life of Ananias, a spiritual man, and he's saying to him, "I want you to go to Saul." As soon as Ananias heard the name Saul, he became afraid and fearful, and he said, "We have heard so much about this man. He is not a good man, and you want me to go to him?" And here is what the voice of the Lord is saying to Ananias. He's saying to him in verse fifteen of the scripture you read, "That I want you to go to him, because I have selected him, and I choose him to be an instrument for me." In this room here today, through the Secondary Schools Board of Education Convention, we have no accidents here. We have nobody who is not supposed to be here. For many of you would have started your life with different dreams and different aspirations. Maybe you thought to yourself when you started out at university that teaching is not something that I want to do, or teaching is not something I would go into. But God has a funny way of working out things for his children and his people. And so here you are today as an instrument, an educator in the secondary schools. And in our secondary schools, my dear sisters and brothers, you have young men and women, boys and girls coming to you, many of them with their own problems and their own concerns. But here's a gift in your hand, a gift to be used by God's instrument to shape the lives of the boys and girls that come your way and to make them statesmen and stateswomen. A great responsibility, no doubt, and something you cannot do on your own. And so each day of your existence and each day as you come to work, you need the hand of Jesus to lead you, to guide you, and yes, in the times that we're living in and what is happening in our schools to protect you. And you need to trust that God has called you as an instrument, an instrument not to be put aside, an instrument that sometimes might be broken, to be left there and not attended to, an instrument that sometimes might be overworked and you get out of tune. No, you have been selected as an instrument to bring out the best under your care and in your charge. The story is told, as I close, of a young little boy who was such a troubled young student, and every class that he went to, the teachers had great difficulty with him. One day, he ended up in a teacher's class, and the teacher said, "Well, I'll spend some time to find out what is causing young little Tommy to behave this way," and she did it. At the end of the school term, she gave the class a project to purchase a gift and present it to the class. All the children, they did just as our children would do today. They went home, they got their parents and their caregivers involved. They were taken to the malls and the gift shops. They purchased beautiful gifts and wrapped them nicely. And the next day, they came to school with their beautiful gifts to be presented. Tommy went home, he found a broken bracelet, a half a bottle of perfume, and he placed that in a brown paper bag. The next day, as they were coming off to school, the children saw his presentation in his hand, they laughed at him. The school day went on, the teacher left the presentation for the end of the school day, and one by one, she called the children up to give their presentation. She left little Tommy for last. As he got up, the children laughed. The good teacher in her, she quieted him down. Little Tommy opened the brown paper bag, he took out the broken bracelet, and he placed it on his teacher's wrists. He took the half a bottle of perfume and he sprayed just a little on her. The school bell rang, normally he would be the first to run out. He lingered on a little, and then he went to his teacher and he said, "Miss, today you smell just like my mummy." You see, he had lost his mother. And in losing his mother, he became very troubled. But that moment changed that young boy's life forever. The F student became the A student. He did so well from that moment in school that he graduated from high school, he went off to college, he went off to medical school, and he did really well. And at every progress in his life, he would send a teacher a little note, and it would always start like this, "Thank you for being the best teacher that I have ever known." And each time he sent that little note, no doubt it was because something wonderful was taking place in his life. The day came for the young man to be married, he sent his teacher an invitation. "You are the best teacher I have ever had, and the seat that is reserved for the groom's mother is reserved for you." Sometimes, my dear teachers, we don't know how the little things, the little actions of love, the little attention that you would give, the words of encouragement, the little touch of kindness can change the student's life forever. You are an instrument chosen by God. Be the best instrument that you could be. Don't let the things of this world get the better of you. Keep your eyes focused, keep your eyes set on what you are called to do, and you are called to be the best educator in the land of Trinidad and Tobago. May God bless you and keep you now and always. Amen.
Dr. The Honourable Nian Gabsby-Dolly, Minister of Education; the Right Reverend Daniel Chance, Moderator of the Synod of the Presbyterian Church of Trinidad and Tobago; Mr. Sheldon Jodor, School Supervisor, Three Victoria Education District; Reverend Leetra Jacob, Napremah Girls High Schools Chaplain, and all other members of the clergy; Mr. Roy Omrow, Chairman of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education; other executive members of the board and members of the board; chairpersons of the administrative committees of all schools; Mr. Anthony Watkins, Feature Speaker; other specially invited guests, fellow principals, and members of staff of all of our schools. Good morning. Good morning. It gives me great pleasure, on behalf of all members of staff, to warmly welcome you to Napremah Girls High School and by extension to the Biennial Convention of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education. All members of the Napremah Girls High School staff are present in their beautiful royal purple shirts and are ready and willing to assist if you have any questions or you need anything. We have no planned emergencies today, but in the unlikely event that there is one, there would be an announcement. The exits are clearly marked, and the ushers will guide you out. There are signs along the way to the muster point, which is a netball court by the gym. You either parked there or drove past it when you came up this morning. Male washrooms are through the door to my right. Ladies, we are helping you make your steps today. Your washrooms are through the door to my left, around the corner, follow the signs or the ushers can direct you. Once again, welcome, and I trust that you will enjoy your stay with us. It is also my privilege today to introduce the chairman of today's convention. In the context of the Presbyterian Church of Trinidad and Tobago, he wears many caps. He's an elder and chairman of the Penal Presbyterian Church, the chairman of the Penal Presbyterian ECCE Board of Education, a member of Synod, Synodical Council, and the South Central Presbyterian. The list continues. He's the chairman of the Board of Men, the chairman of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education, and a former chairman of the IRE High School and Napremah College Administrative Committees. This gentleman's qualification, sorry, position him to serve most effectively in his various endeavours. He holds a diploma in pharmacy from the University of the West Indies and has been registered with the Pharmacy Board of Trinidad and Tobago for thirty-three years. Additionally, he has certificates in counselling and public administration from the University of the West Indies, an LLB, honours from the University of London, and a postgraduate diploma in business administration. He is currently the General Manager, Allied Health Services, South West Regional Health Authority, with thirty-one years' service in the Ministry of Health, South West Regional Health Authority, and has served on the National Drug Advisory Committee, the National Oncology Committee, and the National SEDAP Committee. He is the father of three adult children and also the husband of one of our acting principals present today. Please join me in welcoming our chairman today, Mr. Roy Omrow.
Dr. The Honourable Nian Gabsby-Dolly, Minister of Education; the Right Reverend Daniel Chance, Moderator of the Synod of the Presbyterian Church of Trinidad and Tobago; Mr. Sheldon Jodor, School Supervisor, Three Victoria Education District; Reverend Leetra Jacob, Napremah Girls High School Chaplain, and all other members of the clergy; executive members and members of the board; chairpersons of the Administrative Committee of all our schools; Mr. Anthony Watkins, Feature Speaker; other specially invited guests, principals, and members of staff of all our schools. A pleasant good morning. I was trying to figure out who Mrs. Bali was referring to a little while ago. My dear friends, thank you for your kind introduction from Miss Bali. And Miss Bali has been the Chair of the Presbyterian Biennial Convention 2024. Heartfelt thanks and congratulations to you and your dedicated staff for the planning, organising and executing of this event in collaboration with the convention committee. May I also recognise Mr. Matura for his invocation and Reverend Jacob for our most welcome worship experience this morning. It is so refreshing, my dear friends, to be in the same room with so many brilliant minds, our principals and vice principals, heads and deans, teachers, and of course, our retirees, all responsible for a ray of hope for our most prized gifts, our students. Albert Einstein reminded us, strive not to be a success, but rather be of value. And this is exactly what our Secondary School Board is committed to achieve in the Synod term 2024-2025, as we examine today thriving in a dynamic environment. So let me very, very quickly introduce. Firstly, I'm going to introduce our executive members. You just have to raise your hand when I call your name, so we'll put on the name to the face. Our Vice Chairman, Mr. Duku; our Correspondent Secretary, Miss Suzanne Matura; our Treasurer, Mr. Kenny Arjun; our General Secretary, Mrs. Samai, he will be with us shortly; members of our board; our Adcom Chairs; our School Managers; our School Chaplain. And let me very, very quickly continue with our five gems. When I call your school, please raise your hand, shout, get up and dance, however you want to make a joyful noise this morning. We start with IRE High School. Napremah College. I should start over. Hillview College. St Augustine Girls High School, and we know they may be here shortly. So let's give all ourselves a round of applause this morning. Hold on, hold on. You all forget I chair the programme, right? Okay. And our gracious hosts this morning, who have really been working for the past couple of months to get this show on the road, Napremah Girls High School. At this time, my dear friends, we pause for a moment, we take it down a little bit, and we reflect on the magnanimous impact from our Canadian missionaries, our founding mothers and fathers, our government officials, the PCTT and the SATC, our administrators, teachers, and stakeholders. We have so many icons in our schools. And today, our country celebrates the life of Dr. Anna Mahis, educator, recipient of national awards, teacher, principal, and role model. Let us all stand for a moment of silence. We unite our hearts in prayer as we remember this morning with gratitude the life and work and witness of a young student who sat in this school here at Napremah Girls. of a young student who sat in this school here at Napremah Girls, a principal for many years at St. Augustine Girls High School, someone who benefited from the love and care and mission of our church, Dr. Anna Mahes. We remember all those mothers and fathers, siblings, Bible women, ordained ministers, those who contributed to the growth and development, the many who shaped and continue to shape the tender minds of so many students. Holy and gracious and loving God, you are regarded as the caretaker of souls. And within your everlasting arms, O God, the soul of our dear sister and mother Anna Mahes finds rest. God, in moments like these, we are comforted by your word, your indwelling power, and the rich memory we have of our loved ones. They will rest from their labor, God, and all the great and wonderful things which they have done. Father, they will certainly receive their reward. Thank you, O God, for we pray in your name. Amen.
Executive members of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education; the Right Reverend Daniel Chance, Moderator of the Synod of the Presbyterian Church of Trinidad and Tobago; Miss Karen Bali, Principal Acting of Napremah Girls High School; principals, teachers, staff of the various secondary schools, specially invited guests; our Feature Speaker for today, Mr. Anthony Watkins, my friend, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. It is a pleasure to be here every time I come to our Presbyterian school hall. It reminds me very much of the school hall that I spent seven years being a part of, and so it's a pleasure really to be here. I am a proud product of the Presbyterian education system. And today is a bittersweet day for me, as I spend this time with you, because as we know, and as was mentioned, and given honour and tribute, we have the celebration of the life of Dr. Anna Mahes, whom I feel very privileged to have been a student under. And I can tell you that her influence in great part accounts for a lot of my professional development today. As a student of Anna Mahes, and I heard one person recite that Latin motto so quickly, I'm sure she may have been a student of SARS. So we have at least one other person here. But if you were privileged to experience the leadership of Dr. Mahes, it was very difficult to not be awed, impressed, and almost drawn into a web, her web. When Dr. Mahes was coming to your class, you smelled the perfume at least six feet in front of her. You heard the steps, and in the stride alone, you understood that this woman meant business. It wasn't a pattering stride, and she was a slight woman. But that stride was so heavy. You heard it all the way down the corridor, and you immediately understood that if you were doing anything that was out of the school code, to brace yourself immediately and shape up. She did not stand for anything but excellence and discipline. And she spoke to us often about what she expected of us. She spoke to us about what it meant to be a SARS girl, and what she expected of us, both in school and out of school. And her influence, I can tell you, was so very strong that we all aspired to be exactly what she expected us to be. She stood for dignity. She spoke for excellence, equality, and equity. It is the first time I experienced someone saying to the students of a school, "You will wear washi-gongs. You will wear washi-gongs to school because all of you are equal when you get into this gate." And we wore washi-gongs. And we understood it and what it symbolised. Equity, equality, acceptance. And I cannot help but reflect on the lessons she taught me. Because these are the same principles that guide my tenure as Minister of Education. And when we speak about cultural transformation in our schools, as all of our teachers and principals would understand, it is not anything new. It is simply trying to extend to all of our students the possibility for excellence in different areas. It is trying to extend to all of our students the experience that I know many of the students would receive as a student of the Presbyterian Board School of Education. Because there is a synergy, and I imagine it is meetings like these, and it is meetings of principals that allow the Presbyterian schools to maintain a standard of excellence across the board that has a very serious impact on society. Because we don't know where these children under our care will reach. We don't know what positions of leadership. And I can assure you, as a student of SARS, I never thought that this would be my position, or some may say my portion, at this time. But the preparation that Anna Mahes and her team of teachers would have given at that time was critical in shaping a leader. And this is what we are all called to do. And our teachers are the ones that drive it and that interact with our students and bring the transformation that is required, smooth out the rough edges, show our students what it means to be ideal citizens. It is our teachers, it is our principals. And if all of us were to do this with all that we have, then our country would be a much better place. And if we were to have the support of all of our parents in doing that, then our country would be a much better place. I ask you to think today about if we were to tell all of our children to wear washi-gongs to school. Just consider it. What would be the reaction of the children, of the parents? What would be the reaction? But this was in the 1990s. And this was the level of discipline and compliance that was able to come from one school under the leadership of one principal. And I dare say that when we speak about cultural transformation, it is not so much what we want to become. It is these things that we want to reignite. These understandings of how important discipline is to our students and our citizens and our country. Important as a watchword, but even more important in the way we embrace it within our school culture. And I want to congratulate and thank the Presbyterian schools for what you have been doing, and what you continue to do, and what you have done, not just for the students in front of you, but for Trinidad and Tobago. And as we embrace cultural transformation, as we encourage our teachers to harken back to what existed before, we are doing it with a view of what we have lost over the years and what we need to regain if we want to progress Trinidad and Tobago in the way that we know we want it to be. We want a better country. We all want to see things change in our country for the better. Some of the things we've lost, we want to see them come back. But we are not going to get them back by just wanting it. We are only going to get them back by hard work, dedication, and commitment over years. So it's no magic wand. It's us putting in the work. Us speaking to our students some more, because you know what? They're not getting, some of them, that admonition from home. They're not getting it in the churches because they're not there. So sometimes, teachers, we are going to be the only ones between those children and their futures. And our influence is going to make a lot of difference. I'm sure we could all remember some of our teachers from our secondary school experience or primary school experience, and the influence they would have had on our lives. I'm sure we could remember our principals. So as we strive to serve our country, let us strive to do so in the way that we know is best. We have an opportunity and a privilege. It may not seem so every day. And it may not feel like that on many occasions because there are many challenges associated with doing what we have to do. However, we are blessed and privileged to be in these positions to influence the Trinidad and Tobago that we want. So let us all hold these thoughts and these ideals as we continue to do what God has blessed us with the privilege to do. And let us remember people like Dr. Anna Mahes, who served long and hard in the vineyard and who has influenced our country for the better. God bless us as we continue on, and God bless Trinidad and Tobago.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chairman of this conference and Chairman of our board. In her absence, Dr. The Honourable Nian Gabsby Dolly, Minister of Education; the Right Reverend Daniel Chance, Moderator of the Synod of the Presbyterian Church of Trinidad and Tobago; Mr. Sheldon Joda, School Supervisor, Three. In absentia again, our Chaplain, Reverend Litra Jacob, Napremah Girls High School Chaplain, and other members of the clergy; Chairpersons of Adcoms of the different schools; our Feature Speaker, Mr. Anthony Watkins; other specially invited guests, principals, members of staff of all our schools. Good morning. So it is with great pleasure and enthusiasm that I extend warmest greetings on behalf of the Presbyterian Secondary School Board of Education to each and every one of you gathered here today at this Presbyterian Secondary School Teachers Convention 2024. As we come together in this shared space of learning and growth, we are reminded of the profound impact that we as educators have on shaping the future. Today's convention has a dual purpose. Firstly, to recognise and honour our retired principals, teachers, and ancillary staff who retired after January. who retired after January 2021. And secondly, to explore the theme "Thrive in a Dynamic Environment", which will be especially important for our current staff at our five schools. Our last convention was held in January 2021, and that was during COVID-19. And so it was an hybrid event where, for example, our Minister of Education, the Chair of the Teaching Service Commission, the CEO of the Ministry of Education, all sent pre-recorded greetings. Also, the retirees from our three schools from South were honored at NAPS. And under two northern schools, the retirees were honored at St. Augustine Girls High School. That was a dynamic environment because we could not assemble as we are assembled here. And so we adapted in order to achieve our goals, which is in keeping with today's theme. The Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education believes in inclusiveness, and every employee is important. And so today, we give due recognition to our principals, teachers, and ancillary staff. We are indeed happy to have you retirees here this morning to accept our gratitude, our blessings, and the recognition of your contribution to our great institutions of learning, namely Napremah College, Napremah Girls High School, Hillview College, St. Augustine Girls High School, and Irie High School. As a Board of Education, we sincerely thank you all for your dedication to duty and your loyal and sacrificial service to our schools. Congratulations on your retirement. Esteemed educators and our in-service teachers, please remember that you are professionals. As such, you have a sacred responsibility to your clients, especially your students. Today's convention, no doubt, is designed to enhance and enrich your teaching journey. And we are happy to see so many of you in attendance today. It shows your interest in professional development. So in this dynamic landscape of education, our roles as teachers are more vital than ever before. We are not just imparting knowledge. We are nurturing minds, fostering curiosity, and instilling the values that will guide our students towards a brighter and safer tomorrow. We are not just educators. We are architects of dreams, builders of futures, and champions of change. Together, we have the power to transform lives, ignite passions, and shape the world for generations to come. Let us seize this moment to reaffirm our commitment to the noble profession of teaching and to empower ourselves with the knowledge and skills needed to lead with excellence. Today, we salute our retired educators and ancillary staff. We say, "Well done, good and faithful servants, entering to the joys of retirement." And I would like to leave a short message to our retirees. It's a quote by Jason Bloom. And I quote, "The things that matter in this life are not fortune and fame. They are only temporary solutions. True happiness comes from within when we appreciate all we have been blessed with, knowing that we do not need more. You are loved, appreciated, and very special. You have touched so many lives and made this world a better place just by being the one-of-a-kind, beautiful person that you are." End of quote. Today, as I conclude, let me say to our retired educators and ancillary staff, "Thank you for your dedication, your passion, your unwavering commitment to the cause of education. May this convention be a source of inspiration and empowerment for us all." Thank you.
Good morning, my dear brothers and sisters. In the interest of time, salutations to all. The Presbyterian Church continues to uphold its mission to all of God's people, wherever they are. And when I speak about the mission of our church, I'm speaking about the proclamation of God's Word as well as other aspects of ministry. And today, special emphasis, special emphasis must be made to the pivotal role the church continues to play in the field of education. The accomplishments of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools bear testimony of your unwavering commitments and dedication to academic excellence. Those who have benefited from the mission and vision of these noble institutions have made and continue to make an indelible mark, not only within the hollowed boundaries of TNT, but also on the international platform. As you meet, or as we meet for this convention, no doubt, you will call to mind where you once were as individuals, as well as your school, where you are today, and your vision for the future. Being leaders within a Dean number national school, you need teachers, auxiliary staff, former educators. You need to reference your call from God to be an educator. And do you see teaching? Do you see teaching or to be a teacher as a call? Yes or no? Yes. And when we can view teaching as a call, then as we reference your call, you will come to the realization that you are called and set apart for a sacred undertaking. Here what Romans tells us. If you are a teacher, teach well. If you are a teacher, teach well. Teachers, principals, all those who are here. God holds us accountable for the manner in which we treat the young ones under our charge. I listened to Reverend Jacob this morning, to our Minister of Education, to Mr. Duku. But teachers, principals, Adcom, the Secondary Board, do we view our students as our sons and daughters? God has given to each one of us spiritual gifts. And by His grace, we must continue to impart knowledge and Christian values to all those who walk through the doors of our secondary schools. Indeed, we are given the responsibility by God to teach our sons and our daughters, to impress upon them to share a meaningful relationship with God. As you meet, as we assemble this morning, you will receive new insight and approaches as you continue to prepare yourself for tomorrow's challenges. You would agree with me? Your students are different now. Am I correct? Yes. Our sons and our daughters are different. As I extend greetings to you on behalf of the Synod of our church, the Presbyterian Church, Board, the Secondary Board, the five secondary schools, be confident in knowing that the church continues to support your high ideals. Permit me to issue this challenge to you. Our chairperson, Mr. Roy Umrah, spoke about the three Cs. I leave with you three Ls. As teachers, may you continue to love your vocation. That's the first one. Listen attentively to your young charges. Embrace every opportunity to learn. Love, listen, and learn. A teacher will forever be a student. Greetings to all.
Thank you very much, Moderator of the Presbyterian Church. I don't know how much of you know our moderator. Our moderator is not a person who sits in his office. He is on the ground. I remember when Napremah College and SWR Richey, we had to do the Ministry of Public Administration Diamond Standards Certification Program. One of the tenants was back to the floor. And that is one way. I know we do it with our clinical supervision and so on, but we must be back to the floor, my dear friends. We move on to our second cultural item. Let us welcome the staff of Irie High School Teachers Choir, Voices of Love. Let us give them a round of applause.
I believe the children are our future. Teach them well and let them lead the way. Show them all the beauty they possess inside. Give them a sense of pride to make it easier. Let the children suffer. Remind us how we used to be. Everybody's searching for a hero. People need someone to look up to. Never found anyone who will believe. Only place to be is order to be had on. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This time, this time, we need. Last week, I'm thinking, going. That's the end of my day to me. Because of grace, love of all is happening to me. I found the grace of love of all inside of me. They got to try. We're going to be the circle of love. And we're going to start a new life. We are all a part of our drinking melody. And if you feel love is all we need. Make it a better place for you and for me and the entire humanity. People really can't care if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and me. We are the world. We are the children. We are the ones in priority so that's our thing. There's no choice but to make it. And saving our own lives. We should make better things as soon as we can. People really can't care if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. Make a better place for you and for me.
My dear friends, we warmly welcome our retirees. We did get excuses from two, and we do understand from our dear brother Leslie and our dear sister Linda. And we want to express our heartfelt thanks for your magnanimous contribution to education and for managing our plant over the years. On behalf of all of us, we wish you all the best and God's richest blessings as you continue your pilgrimage of justice, reconciliation, and unity within our communities. At this time, I invite a member of our committee, Ms. Kourin Mohammed, to pay tribute to our retirees from Hillview College and SAGS.
In her absence, Dr. the Honorable Nyan Gadsby Dolly, Minister of Education. The Right Reverend Daniel Chance, Moderator of the Synod of the Presbyterian Church of Trinidad and Tobago. Mr. Sheldon Joda, School Supervisor III, Victoria Education District. In her absence, Reverend Litra Jacob, Napremah Girls High School's Chaplain, and all other members of the clergy. Mr. Roy Umrah, Chairman of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education and Executive Members of the Board and other members of the Board. Chairpersons of the Administrative Committees of all schools. Mr. Anthony Watkins, our feature speaker. Other specially invited guests, principals, and members of staff of all our schools. A pleasant day to you all. This segment of the program recognizes our dedicated ancillary staff, educators, administrators, whose sterling efforts contributed towards the efficient operations at our five educational institutions and the success of our students. We are indeed thankful for the opportunity to show our appreciation at this, our 2024 biennial conference. As we honor our retirees of Hillview College and St. Augustine Girls High School, I invite our moderator of the Synod of the Presbyterian Church of Trinidad and Tobago, the Right Reverend Daniel Chance to the front, Jay Mahes, Retired Dean, 30th August 2021. Jay Mahes, Retired Dean, 30th August 2021. Yes, let's show our appreciation, even though persons may not be here. Kathy Brooks, Retired Dean, 9th November 2021. Thakur Rup, Retired Head of Department, 18 September 2023. Karen Williams Sharma, Retired Teacher III, 2nd June 2021. Sheri Ann Saunders, Retired Teacher III, 2nd January 2023. Elsvet Anne Selina, Retired Teacher III, 5th January 2023. And Marlon Bechu, Retired Teacher III, 15th January 2024. We now move on to St. Augustine Girls' High School. Linda Dari, Retired Principal, 4th November 2021. We show our appreciation. Yes, Mr. Dukku, can you kindly go to the front to accept the awards tanks? So Linda Dari, Principal, Retired, 4th November 2021. Diane Ramjag, Teacher, Retired, 2nd October 2022. Yes, Mr. Dukku? Florence Suknanan, Retired Teacher III, 27 December 2022. Nezamudin Ali, Retired Teacher III, 4th January 2023. John Subar, Retired Lab Assistant, 3rd November 2022. Helena Petra Husen, Retired Typist, 18th August 2023. Quazi Kazir Khan, Retired Handyman Messenger, 14th May 2024. Thank you very much to Mr. Dukku and our moderator. The Right Reverend Danielle Chance, I now pass us over to Mr. Umrah.
All right, thank you very much to all our retirees from Hillview College and St. Augustine Girls' High School. Our cultural item number three is from SAGs and they're probably still on their way, so SAGs is not here. So we will have to make up a cultural item since we are so bright and diverse and energetic. So we're going to sing a song. I think we should get some background music. And this song requires you to move around. I just given you five minutes to move around and shake every body hand in this room.
All right, so as we continue to recognize our dedicated staff members of Iri High School, Napremah College and Napremah Girls' High School, I'd like to ask Mr. Watkins to kindly grace us with your presence at the front to present the tribute to our retirees. So we have our first retiree of Iri High School, following from the program, Roy Nandlal, Retired Principal, 7th July 2023. Declan Hive, Retired Dean, 18th February 2022. Gaya Passad Manohar, Retired Dean, 24th May 2022. Amrita Maharaj, Retired Lab Assistant, 18th February 2023. All right. Moving on to Napremah College, we have Devonan Gosine, Retired Head of Department, 9th August 2021. And I'll ask Mr. Ali to come forward if anyone isn't here to collect on their behalf as well. Mr. Gosine, can you kindly accept for Joanne Gosine, Retired Teacher III, 10th October 2021? Leela Mani Maharaj Trehan, Retired Teacher III, 19th October 2021. Patricia Huggins, Retired Clerk Typist, 22nd September 2023. Lovely. All right, moving on to Napremah Girls' High School, and I will ask Mrs. Bali to do the needful if anyone isn't here. Karen Bowler Ramkesun, Retired HOD Vice Principal Acting, 18th July 2023. We want to pause for Futo there. All right. Charmaine Rahaman Suusanga, Retired Head of Department, 14th September 2021. Neela Rupchand, Retired Head of Department, 7th August 2022. Sharon Sahado, Retired Head of Department, 13th August 2023. Gina Mahado, Retired Teacher III, 21st June 2022. Kathian Sideno Cook, Retired Teacher I, 8th March 2024. Thank you very much, Mr. Anthony Watkins and to our principals.
We will have a little break in a few minutes. Just about 20 minutes. Ms. Bali will guide us with that break and her team as to where we will be escorted or not escorted. But before we have that break, we have a number four cultural item. But the challenge I have with this cultural item, I got three names to introduce them. Okay, so I'm going to use all. To take us to cultural item number four. We have the best of the five. North, South, East, West, Napremah College is the best and the Paradise Posse. Let's welcome Napremah College.
I'll get some people. Shake something. A little bit real nice. Let me go, let me go, let me go. All I'm going upstairs, eh? Hear me now. Father has given us a little thing I don't deserve. Here we go. Part of you is in the heaven. Let me hear you sing. Ah. All the song is good. All the song is good. Hear me now. Forgive us this daily recesses we sing something more than what is on the city. All the singing here now sing. I know this line good though. Our most people part of this back in our season when men lose their reason. And most of us just want to not have a good time because they're looking for a life. Because they feeling fine now. All the help of your hand, a man. One more time, right? And as we jump up and down in this crazy town, everybody, put your hand in the air. Let me hear you sing it out. There's a nice part on the phone, follow that, follow that. Everybody hand. All the song is sweet. Everybody give. Oh God. Everybody hand raise. And if you know what I mean.
Put up your finger.
If you know what I mean.
Put up your hand.
If you know what I mean, everybody now, let me hear you scream.
Oh, the dice raising.
Oh. Let God be praised. Oh.
Father in mercy.
But bring a little music.
Bring a little vibration, babe.
So everybody, everybody come on. We're going from left to right. Let me go, let me go. Everybody come and celebrate. Sing it, bless it, do it, celebrate. Find school together. Everybody come and celebrate. And everybody singing.
Eh eh, ooh eh eh, I love my country.
Everybody singing.
Eh eh, ooh eh eh, I feel it right.
I'm just happy this.
Ooh eh eh, ooh eh eh, I love my country.
Janelle, you ready for the second verse?
Eh eh, ooh eh eh.
Let me hear you sing the second verse, so we know. Eh.
Our father was a man who said, "I told that we cannot feel a part of your heaven."
What you mean in here? Let me hear you sing.
Ah.
I love my land.
Forgive us today, oh, baby, we taste the three things that pass us on your city.
Let me go again.
Amen.
All right, for the next hand now, right? We're going up, we're next hand, only one hand going up.
And this every day when we come out to play, and we come out to sway, and we breaking away. Someone say, "What they have to say?" But told me, "You know the pain that we're feeling."
Next hand, next hand.
Amen.
Yeah.
I've been wanting to begin and I'm sure they could find that honey for Tuesday ending.
Sing it out, sing it.
Amen. Everybody, let me go. Let me go.
Everybody hand. Yeah, everybody give. Everybody hand.
Everybody give, everybody hand, everybody hand.
Why do they know what I mean?
Then put up your finger.
If you know what I mean.
Put up your hand.
If you know what I mean.
Then put up your finger.
Know what I mean then?
Oh. Let God be praised. We got no. Let God be.
I'm going.
Father in mercy. Give us a little music.
To make vibration raise.
Everybody come on.
Everybody come and celebrate.
Shake a leg, shake a leg and celebrate.
Everybody come and celebrate.
Feel like a mother, yeah.
Yeah. Every celebrate it. Find best food, the best, the best, the best, the best. Find best food.
Eh, I love my country.
Find best, find best. Eh eh, find best, find best. Find best, find best. Eh eh, find best, find best. Ooh eh eh, ooh eh eh. All the, we coming out, right?
Eh eh, ooh eh eh.
Everybody come and celebrate now.
Eh eh, ooh eh eh.
Everybody come and celebrate now.
Eh eh, ooh eh eh.
I love my country.
And everybody say eh eh. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Special greetings to senior members of the Presbyterian faith, the school board and principals, teachers, all of you all, and of course to our beloved retirees. In 1989, I'll tell you some more stories. In 1989 though, when I started my company, we used to do programs on retirement planning and somebody said, "But you in your forties?" And think, "Would you know about retirement?" Well, they were right. I had never retired. I have since gone past the official retirement age. I'm now quite a bit older than that and I still haven't retired. So I I don't know what it is to retire. What does it feel like? I need to ask these people. But retirement, I think, is, you know, something that I don't look forward to. I really want to continue to do what I do because I just love to do it. But a pleasure to be here with you all this morning and I need to confess that in 1989, let me go back a little bit. All that stuff that they read about me, I'm really just a little fella who grew up in Neterville in Arima. Went to Arima Boys' Government, went to St. Mary's, went away and left that in 1968 and went off to Canada. And for the first time, I was out of the reach of my parents, particularly my mother. I had a grand time. Late 60s and early 70s were the days of the hippies and free love and God is dead and I just had a grand time in that pigsty. You know the pigsty from the prodigal son? Yeah, man, I was out there. Thankfully, I lived long enough to come back to understand the place of God in my life. And I thank Him for that grace and that privilege. But I really was destined to be in this field, to be here with you all. My mother was born in Orangeville in Tobago in 1920, 1921. And she said that before she left school, primary school, she was a teacher. There were some pillars under the house and she said they used to eat licks from her. She used to be like, "One and one, no, it's not free, licks." She would do that and of course, apparently from early childhood, she never stopped. Until I guess her arms gave away and she couldn't do it anymore. My father was also a teacher and he went into teaching and they met at training college. So I don't know, training college has something that I guess I owe a debt of gratitude to that place. And they worked together in Tobago for a while. My bigger brother was born over there and then they came back to Trinidad. And I grew up in this house with two teachers. Um, it was a pleasant experience. My, my father was a really cool fellow. My mother was a stickler, all right? And I got many stickers from her. But really, it was, it was just a space. I don't know, as, as young as I was at the time, I don't know that I really knew what teaching was, but there was just an aura in the house. I said, listen, there are things that you do. You do your homework, you play, you enjoy yourself, but you do what has to be done. And the way people would come to the house on mornings, sometimes somebody looking for a recommendation, no typewriter, no printer or nothing like that, you know? And I'd see my mother and father sit and write out a recommendation for somebody. You know, this was late fifties and it just stuck with me. So when I left school in nineteen sixty-six, I, my first job was in the public service, I was a, I see somebody come in. You must learn to do mental without moving your lips on your hands. You know, but I, 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 I worked at the Ministry of Agriculture for a couple weeks, a couple months. But I had applied to teach and September of nineteen sixty-six, I began to teach at Tranquility Government Secondary. The boys and the girls, they were usually Tranquility intermediate. They had put the boys and the girls together and made it Tranquility Secondary. And I want to share something with you from a secondary school perspective. In those days, seven periods a day, well, of course, five days a week, so that's thirty-five periods, right? Our teaching workload was somewhere between thirty and thirty-two periods per week. It was rough, but I was young. I thought I was bright, I was strong, I was all of seventeen when I started to teach there. And it was just a time when you met older teachers, more experienced people. And I began to understand a little more what education was about. But as I say, I left, went off to Canada and spent thirteen years there. Came back at the end of nineteen eighty and I had spent some time working in the prison system up there. And I really wanted to work in the prison system down here. But people saw my experience, thought it was really great and therefore they were a little afraid and they never took me into the prison system. So I said, well, why wait until somebody gets to prison to work for them? Why not get them before they get to prison? So I picked up my old education hat and I joined the guidance unit. I became a guidance officer in nineteen eighty-one and worked there in Northeastern College and Toko Composite for eight years until nineteen eighty-nine. I don't know what you all feel like as secondary school teachers, but when I joined there, I was nineteen eighty-nine, what was I? I was just about, no, nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen eighty-one, I was just about early thirties, thirty-two, somewhere around there. And I used to get along with the children quite well. And by the time I got close to forty, I found the children started to change. They were different. I wasn't keeping up with the slangs, the music or with them. And I thought I needed to move on. It was a difficult time because I also had some difficulties with administration in the guidance unit and in the school. And you know, sometimes when you want to move, you create your own crisis. So in January of nineteen eighty-nine, Lionel Ramuta was the principal at Northeastern at the time. I went to school and I say, I'm not talking to the principal. I'm just going to do my work and I was at Northeastern Toko Composite and I was all over the place. Sister Rosary was starting a special school in Matlot. Minister of Education, Clive Pantin at the time had started Coreal Post Primary Centre, so they asked me to help there. So I was on the road and not talking to the principal. So Mr. Ramuta sent a letter to the ministry saying I stopped reporting for duty. Actually, I stopped talking to him, all right? But I was still working very hard. And of course, when in those days, they tell you, they receive a letter saying that you stop reporting for duty, they used to stop your salary. So at the end of March, everybody has got paid except me. Um, so it was a kind of seminal moment in my life and I realized I was, in a sense, creating my crisis because I needed to leave. The job was becoming pretty difficult. I was becoming a little tired and stressed by the job and I left. I didn't desert. I actually left so that I could recharge my batteries and come back and work with teachers like you. And leaving the system at the time was something of a key moment for me. And it really speaks to the fact that on mornings, I used to get up, I live in Sao, still, got up, I would drink my coffee and I would tap my cup on the arm of the chair and then ask myself a question. Do I really have to go to school today? And I would think about the children and say, yes, you have to go to school. And I went to school. But before that, I used to park my car in front, open my guidance office and the door would be wide open and children would come, sir, I could talk to you. In those latter, those last few months, I used to park my car towards the back of the school. I would unlock the guidance office, but I wouldn't swing the door open. So from across the courtyard, they wouldn't be sure if I was there. But some little voice would always come, sir, I could talk to you. And I used to say, yes. That was a massive lie because I really didn't want to talk with anybody. I didn't want to see anybody, but I would play the part. And it'd come in, I'd sit down, listen to them, give them the guidance, give them the information they needed. But I knew that I could not continue to live the lie. If we love our children, if we love the work that we do, we must be honest with ourselves, with them and with God. I knew I had to leave, so I told them, I, in fact, I, let me tell you this story. Mr. Ramuta, rest his soul, he's no longer alive. But you know, I went to the guidance unit and I said, take me out of that school because I'm going to get myself in trouble. I wouldn't tell you what I told them I would do. Um, my guidance supervisor said, well, you know, Mr. Watkins, that's not the way to apply for a transfer. I said, okay, if that's not the way, don't transfer me, leave me there and you'll see what will happen. In a week or so, they called me and said they had a vacancy in Tuna Puna Secondary. I went there, spent a term and I realized I didn't need a change of school. I needed to be out of the space. Sometimes we get to a place in our lives where the work becomes so burdensome, so tough, so difficult, that we really need to ask ourselves an honest question. Am I doing justice to myself, to the profession, to the children, to the ministry and to the future? And if you're in that place, ask yourself the question, get somebody to talk to because it really is not worth it to continue to do something and as I say, to live the lie and pretending that you're in a good place. And I know that the education is not an easy place to be. I've experienced it. And yes, as we think about the team today, the issue of thriving in a dynamic environment, yes, it's dynamic. And it's dynamic because a lot of the old order has changed in the name of what we call, or they call, progress and development. There are all kinds of theories about people and gender and life and how we should live that are being exposed all over. So principles are being discarded, technology is challenging people's relationships and the voices of deviance plant seeds that challenge the word of God. It is a difficult time. Dynamic doesn't always been good. So we are in a difficult place and it reminds me of something that I came across many years ago called the paradox of our times. And it says that we have wider highways but narrower viewpoints. We eat more food, but we get less nutrition. We live in larger houses, but we have more broken homes. There's more communication technology, but we are less and less in touch with ourselves and the people around us. Taller buildings, shorter tempers, more money, less value for life. More conveniences, but somehow or other, we seem to have less time than ever before. That's the paradox of the times we live in. But there are some other paradoxes that teach us some valuable lessons. And one of them is that every problem brings with it a gift. Think about your growing times. They weren't the easy times in your life. The difficult times in your life are the times when you become more resolute, when you make clear decisions, when you become more focused and recommit yourself to something that is noble. Another paradox is that creation begins with destruction. You have your house, you have your lawn, but you want an extension. Well, you have to destroy your lawn to be able to get that extension. Sometimes we have to destroy the thoughts that we have carried for life in order to think something new and move into new spaces. We recognize, of course, that in danger, there is always opportunity. So we live with paradox every day that we, that we live. And you know, sometimes it lives even in our proverbs, you know? Say, out of sight, out of mind, but absence makes the heart grow fonder. Contradictions, but we live with them and we make it. But what is the gift in this dynamic environment in which we live? Well, one of the gifts is that we have the opportunity to revisit the power of purpose. Because sometimes the what doesn't seem to be doing it for us, but the why has significant potential. Difficulties in a, in a, in a dynamic environment like this may cause us to lift ourselves up above the clouds and look down and ask, what's going on along there? Why are we here? What am I really doing? Our presence on earth, your presence in the job that you're doing right now is not by any means an accident. Let me share a story with you. I had left school, left university in Toronto and was sort of wandering about the place and signed up for a course on probation and aftercare, we're doing probation with youths. The book that was necessary for the program was not available in the bookstores downtown, but they told me that it was available at a publisher on the west end of Toronto. So I got on the subway, got to the end of the line, got on a bus and was going down. And I missed the bus stop at the publisher's place. When I got out, there was a building across the road and the sign said Mimico Correctional Centre. See, hmm, that's interesting. I walked back to the publisher, got the book, came out and stood at the bus stop. And of course, you know, Canada is a kind of regulated society, so they have a schedule with all the buses, what time the bus comes, nine twenty-one, you know, ten oh three, and things actually work on schedule like that. And I looked at the schedule and realized the next bus wasn't coming for another twenty or twenty-five minutes. So I walked back to Mimico Correctional Centre, walked into the door and I said personally, I just graduated, I have a degree in psychology and so on. Do you all have any jobs here? They said, yes, you could become a correctional officer. I said, what is a correctional officer? Jail guard, you know, a tanky. They said, oh, we have positions for correctional officers, so I, so she said, yes, you know, we have that. I said, okay, my heart kind of fell, I didn't want to, just leave university, I'm going to be a tanky, jail guard, no, no. But she says, well, you know, the deputy commissioner is here, if you want, you could speak with him. I said, okay, fine, I had the time. I walked into the room and I saw this man and I said, I, I've met you before. He says, yes, I know your face somewhere. Well, about a year previous to that, I was doing a little program at the Addiction Research Foundation in Canada, in Toronto. And he was also present in the program. He was there, I was there, course finished, we went our respective ways. A year later, I walk into this room and this man is here and he says, what are you doing here? I said, well, you know, I graduated and so on and actually I was just checking to see if there were any jobs here. He says, well, yes, you have jobs as a correctional officer. Are you interested? I said, well, yes, I wasn't working. He says, would you like to start tomorrow? I said, yes. That was it. I started to work as a correctional officer. But in that space, when you're in a ministry like that, there are jobs that are advertised within the system that if you're outside, you don't get them. So I worked there as a prison officer for a couple of years and then there was a opportunity to work in a unit where they were doing pre-trial psychiatric assessments on a multidisciplinary team. And what did they want? Psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers, medical, social workers, psychiatric assistants. And they wanted people who were working in a correctional, custodial setting and who had a behavioral science background. Five people in the province of Ontario were to be selected and I was one. Came out at the wrong bus stop. Came and stood at the bus stop and said, saw that there was time. Walked into a place and met someone who I had met in passing a year before. And that person offered me a job. Accident, coincidence or the hand of God? We have to understand that where we are is not an accident. We are called to purpose. So let me reference the book of Jeremiah. Chapter one, verse five says this. Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you. And before you were born, I consecrated you. I appointed you a prophet to the nations. We have been called. There are people whose lives we are destined to touch by virtue of our presence and where we are in the job that we do. But you know, as dynamic as this situation is, as turbulent as the storm may be, we might tell ourselves, I really can't handle this. No, I'm sharing this with you at my present age, right? Some of you may have calculated already. I wasn't as wise as this when I was giving Mr. Ramuta trouble at Northeastern College. So understand that sometimes we are in a space and we're doing things, but we're not always sure what, what, what we impacting and what is being impacted, you know, by us. But the book of First Peter, chapter four, says this. Each of you should use whatever gift you have received to serve others as faithful stewards of God's grace in its various forms. We have within us, he knew us before we were born and he has given us talents, he has given us skills. He has put us in a particular place so that we can serve his purpose. Many are the plans in a man's heart, but it is God's purpose that will prevail. So we ask ourselves, why am I here? Why am I a teacher? Why am I in this place that is dynamic, maybe pressure-filled, maybe a little turbulent, maybe a little dissatisfying? Why am I here? What is our purpose collectively as educators, as teachers, as shepherds in the life of the young people who come to school in our space? The fact is that other people are challenged in this dynamic environment. Our families and our communities are in deep turmoil. They are fractured. People are stressed and all kinds of inhuman things are taking place within those situations. Children wake up on a morning, dress put on, they watch you come. Well, not anymore. And they come to us. And we may not have any idea where they are coming from. We don't know what they experienced last night. The parents come to us and we don't know what they have been through. And we really need to ask ourselves, what is my purpose? To get through the syllabus and prepare people and make sure the SBA done and they're ready for exams. That's not purpose. That's a what? We have to ask ourselves, why are we in the place where we are? What are people coming with and where are they coming from? I have this picture in my head as a little boy growing up in Arima in the nineteen fifties of going to the shop. Go and buy a pound of rice and you go to the shop. And the shopkeeper would take a piece of brown paper, put it in the scale pan. He'd put the one pound weight on the scale. He would dip some rice from in the bag and he would throw it into the scale pan and nothing would happen. And then he would do this. Three more grains of rice would come out of that dipper and the scale pan would move. All of us have stuff in our scale pan. Everybody has stuff. And maybe I could quote from the children and not that far from here, everybody toting. We have stuff in our scale pan and sometimes all it takes is three more grains of rice to tip us over the edge. Children are standing on the edge. Parents are standing on the edge. I don't know if you know it, but some of your colleagues may be standing on the edge. And what does it take from us? As educators, we have been called to be in that place, to set the captives free. We have to bring people back from the edge. What we say to them, what we say to people can have the impact of tipping people over. Let's pull people back from the edge. Let's invite them to come into a place of warmth, a place of understanding. Luke chapter four, verse eighteen says this. The Spirit of the Lord is upon me because he hath anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He had sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to preach deliverance. to preach deliverance to the captives, and recovering of sight to the blind, to set at liberty those who are bruised." As educators, we have the opportunity to do all of those things. The door is open for us. Say, "But where is all this thing Watkins telling me, but I can't do all that?" Do we have the power? Yes, we do. We have been prepared for where we are. Every life experience that we have had has been the opportunity to build and to develop skills. Let me see, a quick show of hands. How many people here are firstborn children? Quick show of hands. Way. Okay, hands down. How many people here are not firstborn, but the child before them was at least three years older than they were? Let me see those hands now. You all are also firstborn, in case you didn't know it. In terms of the dynamic of being firstborn, there's a lot of research that says firstborn children are more highly represented among high achievers than children further down in the line. And I'll tell you why. It has nothing to do with biologically passing that way first, nothing to do with that. It's a social issue. Firstborn children have high expectations placed on them. Firstborn children have more opportunities to take charge and to be leaders. And firstborns have greater opportunity for feedback. Firstborn children, every time they turn, picture, picture. By the time you get to the fourth child, you don't even know where the camera is. But understand it, just by virtue of being born, when you were born, in that line of siblings, you were prepared. That was your first leadership development program that you went to. If you were a class prefect, if you were a patrol leader in scouts, if you were a head boy, head girl, captain of the netball team, whatever you were, that was an opportunity to develop your leadership skills. You were being prepared for a time such as this. In the area where you live, you know, and we often don't recognize how skilled and how powerful and how experienced we are. So when the storm rages, we say, "I don't think I could handle this." I want you to ask any mechanic in the area where you live, how many skills she has? You see me, I gender, she has. Any mechanic by you is a she, all right? Okay, or he, all right, just in case. You know, that person will tell you, "Boss, I have one skill, you know, I just fix car." To fix your car, here's what that mechanic has to do. Listen attentively, diagnose the problem, observe the machine, dismantle it, replace the part, reassemble it, test it, explain to you what happened and give you some advice on what you need to do going forward. Ten skills to fix your car. If that person owns the garage, they do some supervision, some purchasing, some work scheduling, some customer service, some stocktaking. That person will tell you they have one skill, they just fix car. How many skills do you have? If you looked at all your life experiences, all the things that you have done, all the things you've been called to organize and to do, the people who come to you because you're just a good listener. Think of it. All of those skills over your lifetime have prepared you for a time such as this. While we have the power, and if we can understand that, we must also recognize how important it is to take care of ourselves. The Bible says, "Love your neighbor," full stop. Yes? That's not what it says? Love your neighbor as you love yourself. So you need to love yourself. Well, that's a powerful lesson. Because sometimes, and without being blasphemous, no disrespect intended to Jesus, sometimes he would be with his people and they'd be doing their work and then he would kind of disappear, running away from work half day, you know. But where was he going? Back to the source, prayer, meditation, looking after himself, reconnecting with the source of all power. Why? So that he can come back and do the work that he was called to do. And we need at times, as much as we love the children and love our colleagues and love everything and want to do everything for everybody, pull aside, back, take some time, reconnect, recharge your batteries so that you come back in a way that is worthy of the task to which you are called. So you need to set some boundaries at times. You're no good to anyone if you're no good to yourself. What we also have to do, even as we have that sense of purpose and we understand the amount of power that we have and that we take care of ourselves, there's something else inside of us that we need. And it is about faith and courage. And I'm saying, maintain your faith and live with courage. And in the fourth watch of the night, Jesus went unto them, walking on the sea. And when the disciples saw him walking on the sea, they were troubled, saying, "It is a spirit," and they cried out in fear. Storm, dynamic environment, call it what you want, it's a time of difficulty. And something comes to us and we are afraid, "I don't know if I should do this. Who is this thing? What is this thing coming at me?" But straight away, Jesus spoke unto them, saying, "Be of good cheer, it is I; be not afraid." And Peter answered him and said, "Lord, if it be thou, bid me to come unto thee on the water." So we're in a time of storm, we're in a dynamic environment and we're saying, "Listen, I want to be able to do this." And Jesus said, "Come." And when Peter was come down out of the ship, he walked on the water to go to Jesus, things going good. But when he saw the wind boisterous, he was afraid. And beginning to sink, he cried, "Lord, save me." And immediately, Jesus stretched forth his hand and caught him and said, "O thou of little faith, wherefore didst thou doubt?" And when they were come into the ship, the wind ceased. Sometimes we want to go out there, to do what has to be done. We prepare to step into the storm, we prepare to walk on water. But can we maintain the faith? Can we get rid of the doubt so that we can continue to do what we're doing? And that issue of faith and courage is critical. I like to quote an old Spanish bullfighter who says, "To fight a bull when you are not afraid is nothing. To not fight a bull when you are afraid is nothing. But to fight a bull when you are afraid, that is something." And it's about feeling what we feel, being uneasy, but being prepared to continue to do what we are called to do. And you have all been called. Understanding the power of God's purpose for our life and let me make a little, you know, for years as I was, I've had come back from being prodigal and returned to the arms of God. I said, you know, "I want to understand what my purpose in life is. What's my purpose for my life?" And I tried for two, three years to discover my purpose for my life, until one day that voice said to me, "Your purpose for your life?" And I recognized in that moment that the life that I have wasn't mine, it was a life that was lent to me by God for some years and that the purpose I needed to find was not my purpose for this life, but his purpose for the life that he had loaned me. Many are the plans in a man's heart, but it is God's purpose that will prevail. So when we live in that kind of way, we ask ourselves, "I wonder what difference I could make in this teaching?" You need to ask somebody else the question. What difference have you been called to make in the lives of the children and the parents who you encounter? Because the children that you meet, those lives that you touch, one day they will be parents. The lives that you help them to live becomes the space in which others will grow. The parent who comes to you and feels respected, received, and in a sense, a little less torn than they were, goes back and creates a different evening experience for the child that comes home or for the spouse that comes home. Understand the power of that. We have the opportunity to touch people's lives in a real way. And as we improve their life chances now via education and example and mentorship and coaching and friendship, what we are doing is creating and crafting someone who will have children and whose children will have children. And we are touching generations that are not yet born. That's what we are called to do. So in this dynamic environment, understand where you came from. Understand the purpose for which you were created. Know that you have the power and skill to fulfill that purpose. Love and take care of yourself. Live and work with a sense of tomorrow and your legacy and go forward with courage and faith. Why? Because when fear meets courage, courage wins. When despair meets hope, hope wins. When death meets life, life wins. And when doubt meets faith, faith wins. Continue to live and work with courage, hope and faith. Thank you.
I think we could do better than that. Thank you very much, Mr. Watkins, for a most inspiring, empowering and charismatic message of hope, a perfect combination of religion and education, guiding us to reconnect, reminisce and relive. You have certainly given us the tools to thrive in this dynamic environment and a template to live a good life. Thank you most kindly. At this time, I invite the Chair of the Napremo Girls' High School Adcom, Ms. Debbie Singh, to make a presentation to Mr. Watkins. I think Mr. Watkins will have come up too. Yeah? Yeah, you will have to come up.
Mr. Watkins, it is certainly a pleasure for us to sit and reconnect and have the faith and the courage to continue in education and to grow and blossom as educators and leaders within the five secondary schools and wherever life takes us. Thank you for reminding us of our purpose here on earth. May God bless you. May you continue to transform lives in the spirit of God.
We don't normally do this, but I want to ask Mr. Watkins just to show you all the gift that he got. It's a most beautiful book. If you didn't get a copy yet, we have lots available at the Synod office.
Let me just say, I was kind of struck, I kind of goosebump, you know, because it says "An Odyssey of Faith" and the name of my organization is Odyssey Consulting. Thank you all very much. That was very kind of you.
All right, we're moving nicely. My timekeeper here is telling me we are moving nicely with time. We have the fifth and final cultural item. And to introduce this wave of purple, we have Ms. Lydia Bichu.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is my absolute pleasure to introduce to you the NGHS Staff Celebrating nine years of musical excellence, this incredible ensemble has enchanted audiences with their performances at events such as the 2016 Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education Conference and playing the processional for graduates at our annual speech day. After a four-year hiatus caused by the pandemic, we are thrilled to announce their triumphant return. The band is comprised of our dedicated teaching and auxiliary staff members. This band truly embodies the spirit of unity. Despite the unlimited preparation of just three weeks, under the guidance of musical maestro and arranger, Mr. Timothy Bali, the NGHS Staff Steel Orchestra is ready to grace us with their harmonious melodies. Joining them on stage today is the exceptionally talented solist and music teacher, Mrs. Toni Williams-Bess. We must also acknowledge the role of the Form Four students, Zara, Miriam, Kira, Isabel, Sarah and Ariane, who reversed roles and became our tutors during practice. We also cannot overlook the remarkable efforts of Ms. Carissa Barras, who has beautifully designed the orchestra's logo. And lastly, our heartfelt commendation goes to our accomplished music teacher, conductor and drill master, Mrs. Rihanna Edwards-Paul, whose exceptional leadership kept the ensemble in perfect harmony. Without further ado, let us give a resounding applause to the NGHS Staff Steel Orchestra as they take us on a musical journey. Welcome to our corner. Welcome to our corner hall.
A lot of talent in our five schools, my dear friends. Hillview College, teachers can sing too. Iri High School, teachers can sing too with their principal. Naparima College, teachers can sing, dance and wave too. And Naparima Girls' High School, teachers can play Panto at home. Let's give them all a round of applause, my dear friends. My dear friends, as we are winding down to the end of our program, as we reflect on our time well spent, I would like to reiterate that this board has some plans, some set objectives and goals and some measurable KPIs. In a very short space of time, we were able to have two management training workshop, one in March and one in May. In March, we had about forty-seven participants. And May, we had seventy-three persons. Our convention today, our ongoing monthly meetings, our Values for Life Ministry of Education approved program. We had completed our stakeholders meeting at our five schools. We have a contract arrangement committee. Quite a number of subject areas advertised, interviewed and recommended. Currently, deans' interviews are taking place, and I know some of you are involved. And very soon, VP and principals to follow. We are in the process of writing letters to the Ministry of Education for the confirmation and making teachers permanent. I already signed maybe about forty. And we have asked principals to forward the names to us. And we have asked principals to provide a list for all the persons who perform the duties of deans and heads. And we will now engage in a meeting with our principals, how we go forward, how we take this to the ministry so that people will get paid for work. With this momentum, my dear friends, we want to complete all of this within our 2024-2025 Synod term. And we want you to hold us accountable for our duty of care. Our next planned activity will be visits to our five schools through the staff meetings or open door meeting with individuals or groups. So you can, you know, prepare to consult with us. But there's one thing, when I did law through the English Legal System program, I could never forget, and it says, "When you come to equity, you must come with clean hands." And that goes both ways. So if Roger Ali is saying that my chickens are coming across by him and damaging his vegetable garden, then Roger must first check to see if there are any holes in his fence. When you come to equity, you must always come with clean hands. Hold us accountable. This is what our board is for. We were elected to serve by Synod. So please, when Brian Lara had his final retirement match, he just asked one question. He said, "Have I entertained?" We can ask ourselves just one question. Have I served my school, my church, my community? My dear friends, thank you most kindly. As we now invite a young lady to move a vote of thanks. She is the correspondent secretary and an entrepreneur, an elder and all the live wire of our executive. We call upon Mrs. Miss, I get both for calling, she misses, Miss Suzanne Matura.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It is said by Ziegler, gratitude is the healthiest of all human emotions. The more you express gratitude for what you have, the more likely you will have even more to express gratitude for. I acknowledge a table of precedents previously established. As I wish you, ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant afternoon. It is indeed a privilege to stand before you to express heartfelt gratitude on behalf of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education. We recognize the presence of God's grace and mercy today and every day, for which we are forever thankful. As you may have noticed, my head table is clear except for Mr. Umrah. So we thanked them before they left. We presented them with their tokens. The Right Reverend Daniel Chance, moderator of the PCCT. We say thank you to him for his encouragement and support. And we pray that God grants him good health and wisdom as he executes his duties of the office. You see, my script is totally marked up because I have to change everything. The Honorable Minister of Education, Naya, the Honorable Nayan Gatsvidolly. We thank her for her presence here today. Her presence really speaks volumes. We thank her for supporting and recognizing the work of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education and our five schools and her commitment to education. We trust that our partnership will grow with her and with the ministry from strength to strength. Mr. Watkins, we are profoundly grateful that he accepted our invitation to deliver the feature address here today. And we applaud him for the great job he did. Our administrators, teachers and us all have a lot to take away from his advice, encouragement and reminders. And we know these will be surely etched in our minds for years to come. The chaplain of Naparima Girls' High School, Reverend Lytra Jacob. We thank her for her worship session. She surely set the tone for discourse and interaction today. For the pastoral care she extends, our hearts are filled with gratitude. Our honorees, a few of them are still here. We thank you for your dedication and commitment to our schools, to the schools you served in your respective roles as principals, teachers, support staff. Your legacy lives on. We must recognize and remember the late Dr. Anna Mahis for over three decades as principal of St. Augustine Girls' High School and for her service to our country. May her soul rest in eternal peace. We are forever indebted. Our esteemed administrators and teachers, this was all about you. Your presence and participation are appreciated. We truly commend you for your commitment to our Five Gems, as we call them, our schools. And pray Godspeed for your continued work with our students to ensure that our schools remain the top performing schools in the country. Naparima Girls' High School, our host today. We appreciate your efforts, Madam Principal. And we express thanks to your teachers and auxiliary staff for facilitating the board in preparation for today's conference. The committee responsible for coordinating and implementing the plans of our board. Members, you worked tirelessly to realize a successful conference. May your efforts be blessed. It will be remiss of me if I do not acknowledge and thank sponsors and persons who assisted in today's events. Mrs. Sarah Jacob, our ninety-four-year-old alumna of Naparima Girls' High School, who sponsored our doubles van this morning. A couple others, Food Basket, Blue Waters, Hand Donald, Books, etc., Massey Distribution Limited, Donny's Fruit and Vegetables, Readers Plus and all and others who contributed to today's events. We would like to thank the chairman of the Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board and chairman of today's proceedings for taking us through today. Sir, you did a wonderful job. You had us laughing at times. The Presbyterian Secondary Schools Board of Education, we thank them for recognizing the importance of hosting this convention. Ladies and gentlemen, we thankful in all circumstances. First Thessalonians 5:18. I say good evening, good afternoon to you guys.
Thank you very much, Miss Matura. My dear friends, we rarely had control of our time management. And just permit me to just call a few names so that again you can put the name to the face. Our school managers, Naparima College, our vice chairman, Mr. Dukku. Just raise your hand wherever you are. So I think you raised it a few times for the day. Naparima Girls' High School, our very treasurer, Mr. Arjun. And my timekeeper for the day. Iri High School, Mr. Maiku. He was sitting at the front and he just left. Hillview College, our very own stalwart, Mr. Robert Ramsahai, who is also our ADB representative. And St. Augustine Girls' High School, Mr. Andre Thompson, who is absent. Our adcom chairs for Naparima College, Mr. Gary Sumara. He was present this morning. Naparima Girls', Miss Isindra Debbie Singh, our darling. Iri High School, our very old Reverend Shivansiloch. Hillview College, our dear Deaconess Anupa Nanan. And St. Augustine Girls' High School, our presiding elder, Dr. Diane Philip Ramjat. And she is in Tobago right now doing some services. And as I call these names, I want you all to come up in front and line up in front. I was sitting there all day, so I need you all to stand in front of the table, our very dedicated and committed, hardworking administrators. So we start with Hillview College. Vice Principal Acting, Miss Carla, kindly come forward. Both administrators from SAGs, unfortunately, they could not have been here. Principal Acting, Miss Bonny Bisoun. Vice Principal Acting, Shivani Gayadin. Naparima College, Principal Acting, Mr. Roger Ali. Vice Principal Acting, Mr. Rodney Paradesi. Iri High School, Principal Acting, Mrs. Sharon Umrah. Vice Principal Acting, Miss Sumitra Ramnanan Singh. And Iri is the only school today that has an exam. So the Vice Principal Acting and the teacher of the subject had to stay back. And Naparima Girls' High School, Principal Acting, Karen Bali. And Vice Principal Acting, Miss Watkins. Miss Naomi Woodley, I met her in the lunchroom. You all right, Miss? Nice. Two thumbs up I got. My dear friends, you know, sometimes we have to look for role models. Our children would look for role models. And I will tell our children, just look to their parents. And just in case you were looking for role models, look to the front at those very dedicated and committed, hardworking persons. So in conclusion, we started with prayer and we will end with prayer. This is how this ship operates. We invite the Deaconess of the PCTT, a member of the Board of Christian Education and Church Workers Committee, the chairperson of the Hillview College Adcom. And we want to thank her for staying for the entire program. We welcome Miss Deaconess Anupa Nanan to do the closing prayer, benediction and the blessing of the meal.
Before Deaconess speaks, we invite Mr. Sean Sadafal, to our piano that he got quite used to over the last few years. So he's going to accompany us with the choral benediction. And before the benediction and blessing of the meal, I just wanted to let you know what's going to happen after. So those persons who were in the conference room during break, you are invited to return to the conference room. Everyone else, lunch has been served in the cafeteria. We have tables laid out in the cafeteria and what we refer to as our waving gallery area. Please stay back, sit, relax and have your lunch. Or if you so choose, it's packaged to go. But we would really like you to stay back and relax and enjoy lunch with us. All right? Thank you.
Eternal God, you are our King. You rule over all from age to age and you are constant. You are the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end. Your power is unchanging. Your glory is unchanging. Lord, your love is unchanging. And we thank you for your presence and the time that we have spent here, united as your children, learning and growing. Help us, oh Lord, to remember the reasons for your call on our lives as educators. May teachers everywhere continue to be your instruments. For you alone know the plans and purpose you have for them. So continue to bless them, oh Lord. Continue to bless them and may they grow. Uplift them, walk with them and encourage them. And may they feel the power of your Holy Spirit working in their lives as they make an impact on the lives of every student that cross their path with love and unity, bearing much fruit for your glory. We pray a special blessing upon all retirees and thank you for their service to education. May their lives be one of joy and fulfillment and bind us together, oh Lord, with your love. For we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
We will now sing the choral benediction.
We will now sing the choral benediction. We continue in prayer. Let us pray. Father God, you have nourished us with words of wisdom. And so, Lord, we thank you for the food prepared by loving hands. We pray, Lord, that it will nourish our bodies, that it will give us health and strength each day. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. And now, the Lord bless us and keep us. The Lord make his face to shine upon us and be gracious unto us. The Lord lift up his countenance upon us and give us his peace this day and forevermore.